And to start, if you would like to give just a short three to five-ish minute campaign pitch. What you're doing, what you're running for, we will get started.
Yeah, well, one, wanna appreciate this opportunity to speak to you all. It's been an interesting journey, these, you know, this season of campaigning for lots of reasons, but one thing I'm learning or revisiting is the importance of governance in our community. I've been a part of Iowa City for the last thirty-one years, going on thirty-two. So I came at the age of seventeen, went to West High School, graduated from there, then went to Kirkwood and then the University of Iowa. And when I came to Iowa City, I was, came from Chicago. And I was not likely to graduate high school when I came here. I came because I failed chemistry. And my sister was at the University of Iowa and she convinced, she convinced my parents that if I came to Iowa, I didn't have to do chemistry. Well, they, they actually bought into it because they thought, well, if I come to Iowa, then I can get in-state rates and, you know, get ahead of the residential game. And so that is how I ended up in Iowa because I failed chemistry. Or I was going to fail chemistry and not graduate on time with my graduating class. So that's how I actually came to Iowa. It was a great decision. I came without my parents and immediately I had to work a couple of jobs while going to high school. Hardee's flipping burgers, worked at Hy-Vee bagging groceries, did all the fun things that, you know, youth typically do. And then I found myself very quickly in healthcare at the age of eighteen. And then really, really going into hospice care is where I landed at the age of eighteen. Providing care to end-of-life patients. And so from that day to this day, I have been in healthcare. That my degree from the university is in psychology, a bachelor in psychology, and then I have a nursing degree from the university, from Mercy. So that's kind of my educational background. I've been a business owner for the past twenty-one years. Where we provide care to elders and persons with disability. And it's, it is something that I really, really absolutely love. So we have group homes for persons with disabilities. I believe we have eleven right now. There's always a debate on if one is counted as two or, or not. It depends on the state rules. But nevertheless, we also staffed the birdhouse, the hospice house of Johnson County, which has five end-of-life patients there. We've done that since their inception in twenty sixteen. I was part of that five-year planning for the end-of-life patients and how we can keep people in a home environment and not send those that would like to be, who can be at home with their loved ones for various reasons, but didn't want to go to a long-term care facility. And so we've been a part of that since twenty sixteen. Also have a day half for folks as well, for adult daycare, as well as for day habilitation. So that has been my passion and my work for twenty-one years I've been in healthcare. And so when people ask me my, you know, what I do when it comes down to politics, I am absolutely a politician by definition, but the core of me is really a person that listens, that want to get to understand a person's perception. And so while I am absolutely a politician by definition, I see myself as a person that really do care for people and caring for the city is what I think I have done since twenty eighteen.
Right. Thank you so much. And you've gotten into a lot of this, so you don't need to spend a whole lot of time of it. But our first question is, what experiences do you bring to the table for this position?
Yeah, I, you know, again, because of the leadership roles that I had when I was eighteen years old, I actually started at Iowa City Hospice as their scheduler. Nursing was probably not the direction that I thought I would go in, although there's a lot of things that led up to me, just being a caregiver with my grandmother living in the home and all that other stuff and then caring for some aunts. But nevertheless, I, because leadership is something that I naturally have. I, I, I'm, it was interesting, my mom, way back in the day when I was growing up, I was a quiet kid, believe it or not. And my mom would always say, "Son, you don't wanna be the top man in charge. You wanna be right out of the top man." Well, she saw leadership in me. I didn't see it because I was that quiet kid that didn't really go along with the group when they were doing stuff. And people would actually kind of listen to me every now and then. And so leadership is something that I really believe is within me. And I do it from a place where knowing that leaders have a lot of power, they have. And it can be used in a, in a, in a not-so-healthy way. And so I have mentors, I do a lot of self-reflection. And so I really believe that my experiences, I've also really loved leaders. I've watched them, not even realizing that I was watching them all those years, all of my, my bosses. And even in school, I would always like pay full attention, where teachers would say, "You're, I've noticed that you really pay attention." So I, it's, I really do listen to people. And I think that is something, a great quality that a leader has that is really instilled in me naturally.
Yeah. And then for time, about like two or three-ish minutes per question, which is hard.
Yes.
Um, but if elected, what are your, or if re-elected, what are your immediate policy priorities?
Yeah, so there's a lot of, you know, this is, this is one where I, I am really understanding that there's so many things that are going on all at once, especially with the federal and the state things that are happening. But again, I, because this is a question of what are the priorities, I think affordable housing is something that this council and myself continue to look at. We just had a council meeting on Wednesday about, really, with the shelter house and some efforts there. And there's gonna be some next steps that is coming from that, that conversation. Economic opportunities. Iowa City is a place where people really do want to come to work and play. And so we have to make sure that we have businesses that can thrive and be welcomed here. We have small business owners that need to figure out a way to be here where they can afford. And so certainly working, continuing to work with various partners in the economic development world. The other thing that is becoming more and more apparent is ensuring that people feel like they belong here. And so you've been probably hearing my, my statement of, "We all belong here." And it is, it is, it really started as a statement of like, there's so much happening right now and there's so much divisiveness and so much picking and choosing what, what things will, we want to accept and not accept. And at the end of the day, I just want people to know that we all belong here and how can we work together? And so that is what I'm gonna be focusing on, is making sure that people really do feel that they belong in our community. And, and that really speaks to being able to live here, afford, have affordable housing and all those policies and infrastructures that go along with that.
Yeah. And then to directly connect with that, what, how can we make housing more affordable in Iowa City, especially for renters?
So yeah, so the reality about affordability, we have to use all the tools in our toolbox. And we also have to be innovative and try to figure out what are other ways that we can provide affordable housing. So one of the things that came up in our meeting that, you know, I talked about a couple of years ago when I went to a housing, affordable housing conference, was master leasing. So if we're talking about master leasing for folks that have, that are on housing assistance, a lot of our landlords, they do find it as a burden when they have to fill out the paperwork and there's compliance things that they have to fill out. And so master leasing is something that I really believe that the city can help guide those conversations, which I do believe will be happening because of this meeting that we had on this past Tuesday. When it comes down to specifically the question that you asked, is our student renters, you know, I, I wanna say that the, the student body is doing great work with doing some advocacy work at the state and also coming to the council and letting us know what their priorities are and disseminating information. So I think we can continue to walk alongside them with education and really supporting those programs. But at the end of the day, housing is a human right. I really believe it. The first thing that I was given when I said I was gonna run for a city council was there was a group of people that came to me and talked about Iowa City, Iowa City being a human rights city. And one of the top things on there was housing is a human right.
Yeah, thank you so much. Also related to material conditions, what steps will you take to support and engage with the unionized workforce that you perceive? And then how will you support local labor unions in your community?
So Iowa City, of course, have labor unions. And from the first time I was on council, there was situations that came up where it was really trying to figure out pay for staff. And that was something that I supported. Because of that introduction, when I first came on council, relationships were built early on. I was in a special election, so there was not a lot of time for me to pre-develop a lot of relationships. So it was really in the moment. And from that day to this day, I, I, I believe, and I think this will be something that the leaders of those unions will say, "I've always come to the table to listen. I've always, you know, was able to have dialogue, what, hard dialogue, good dialogue." And at the end of the day, I felt walked away very comfortable from the conversation. And so as you know, unions are all about being transparent and really advocating for the workforce. And I, I really do think that I continue to have a great relationship with our union staff and our local labor unions. Of course, I've been involved with some of the local labor union efforts here, have good relationships as well. I, I do believe that, you know, moving forward with our city, there's gonna be continued challenges that we'll have to discuss and navigate. But I really do feel that we have some great leaders, some great advocates that really do come to the table with the best interest in mind to make sure that our workers are safe and that they get fair wages and just fair treatment. And I think that because of who I am, I wanna make sure that that happens.
Yeah. What is your plan to address intrusions from the state and Trump administrations? Also a big question.
Yeah, you know, this is one question that is continuing to evolve. We just heard, you know, the city of Chicago do no ICE zones, no ICE zones. And essentially, this is for property that's owned by the city of Chicago, where they're putting up signage, you know, at all of these properties stating no ICE. Well, there's a lot that goes into this. And I know I'm gonna keep this to two minutes. What I can tell you is the, the Trump administration and we're, and I know that I'm almost, I, I will almost bet everything I have, that we're gonna see some retaliation coming from our state legislators this next session. And so while you're asking for an answer, I, I am fully supportive of our immigrant population. What we're seeing is absolutely wrong. As a leader, my lens is so wide. And I'm also hearing from individuals that are, that can be directly affected by this. And what they're telling me, I am trying to balance my response as well as the city response with my colleagues. Because at the end of the day, we have seen no laws being followed by the federal administration. And we're, we've, we're also seeing in policies where they're making cities either abide by, abide by assisting ICE in certain ways. For instance, in Chicago, there, it was in their transportation contracts where two-point-one billion dollars was retracted. And we also have it in one of our transportation contracts, and it's about four million dollars. Where, you know, we're, we're navigating these conversations. Why I bring this up is because in the policies that they're targeting, the, most of our housing, you know, our housing vouchers, we already know that we're anticipating something to be in there. If that, if they put stuff in there that will affect the most vulnerable people in our community, you know, we have to have a plan to do that backfill of all, over fifteen-hundred folks that are on housing assistance. And so while I know people want me to have an answer right now, what I will tell you is that I am absolutely navigating this. I am talking to folks that are at risk. I am listening to them. There are mixed feelings about being out front and vocal because they're saying at the end of the day, "Mayor, we love you, but you won't be affected by this." And so I am balancing that. And I wanna be transparent in certain circles on, on the efforts that's happening.
Thank you. And, and I guess kind of related, we could just go and talk about question seven is, how will you use your office to protect immigrants and international students against ICE harassment?
Yes, lots of, I, when I tell you lots of conversations are being had, they absolutely are. I think the leaders is where the next target is. There's opportunities with the faith community that is also in discussion with the leaders. And so because there are, you know, immigrant individuals out there that aren't as well-connected to organizations. And so they are not getting some information. They're absolutely living in total fear, which all of them are. And they don't have plans for if something should happen. Like who's going to pick up their child from school if, you know, someone is picked up? Those are critical things that need to happen. And with our international students, absolutely. You know, I will tell you that the communication so far that I've had haven't involved our international students, but I absolutely welcome communication with them. Is, and, and if there's an organization that I can be looked into, of course, I know Demi and some other folks there at the college. I will reach out to them. I appreciate this question because I, I'm open and willing to talk to everyone because I do think that we have to have plans on all types of levels. We don't want anything to happen, but should something happen, there are just some practical things that people, I think, need assurances that they're worried about, that I think we can, you know, do the what-ifs that will bring some comfort.
Yeah, and I'll probably talk a little bit about that when we're out of the formal Q and A. And then I guess kind of going to question six, what is the ideal role of police in our community and what should our criminal justice system look like?
Yeah, so one of the things that the council will be discussing this upcoming budget season is last month, we gave our priorities for budget. Because we know that our budget has, has, it has always come about, come up about the police budget. And policing is bigger than the budget, I, I, I recognize. But I bring that up to say that the council is prioritizing, I'm sorry about that. We're, we are prioritizing a discussion on the, the other things that we can do in our community that can really ensure that folks are getting the right services. The police department, they will be the first to tell you that they're doing some things that they should have no business doing. They, they've been doing it for years, but it is not the right level of, of their involvement. And mental health services are huge in our community. And I think that we need to continue to focus in on how can we ensure that we have those services available. Noting it is great. We have, you know, the emergency lines, you know, and trying to figure out how to really enhance those services where people from the start, when they call in, get the right service at that time. So I am all about, and I've said this from the beginning, that we need changes. Absolutely. How we go about those changes is gonna be through conversation, through bringing in partners. I love community. I will continue to sing their praises. They saved my life. That's for another day. But they do great work. My agency on, you know, have, we were, I know, I know you know about the crisis, the Guideling Center. Well, my agency, Karen Hazamore, was that we had the first three crisis stabilization beds in our county. And we did that for about three, four years, three and a half years. And so I know the, what that program did, it kept folks that might have went to jail out. So there's a lot of things that I think that we can do, a lot of programs that are already existing out there. And the other thing that we heard was Iowa City Police are using them, the county isn't. And what I do know is that education is something that needs to be continuous on utilizing services that are available. And, and that should be a part of the conversation as well.
Yeah, I, thank you so much. And then kind of, we've got about two more substantive questions.
Yes.
What steps will you take to protect the civil rights of racial and ethnic minorities, LGBTQ individuals, disabled people and other marginalized groups?
Yes. So as you know, I am black, if you haven't noticed. I am also gay, two snaps in the circle. And so what I will say is because of my own identities and the work that I've done forever, I am absolutely an advocate. I am absolutely a voice that will amplify, you know, the, the needs, the equity across housing, employment, public access. This weekend or this Friday, we're gonna, tomorrow, we're gonna be doing some ADA stuff. And so this is kind of what I live every day. So for me is, you know, protecting and being vocal for our marginalized groups is something that I do. I will say again, that just like right now, there are two voices that I'm hearing, especially since Jorge ICE, you know, event, where folks are saying, "If you continue to do this, we feel like you're shining a light on us." And, and the feds are wanting to make examples of communities where the light is being shown. And so, you know, that, there is a balance that I have to have because it, and they'll, they, I've heard it a lot of times. "You're not the one that they're gonna come and get." And so I, again, I need to, as we're doing this with a very evil and federal administration and even state administration, I am doing what I can to really ensure that rights maintain and do that balance because there are different voices that I'm hearing from.
Yeah, thank you. And then last question is, what distinguishes you from others in the race?
You know, ironically, this gray hair that you see is something that wasn't here when I started in twenty eighteen. And what I will tell you that is that I really appreciate every one of them. I had started dying them. And now I'm like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna flaunt it. Because it, I don't know if it just shows wisdom, experience, but I'm liking it now. I'm, I'm just embracing it. I've been here since twenty eighteen. I've learned a lot. Our community has experienced a lot. And we're at a, at a point now where it's, it's, it's unbelievable what we're experiencing as a nation, far from anything that the state of Iowa ever stood for and all of the historical grounds that they've done. And so what I would tell you is that I am a person that absolutely listens. And even for the people, you know, that disagree with me, because I really do believe that I am, one, commanded to love. I love unreservedly. So when people come to me and, you know, they may be very mad at something that I've said, something that I've done, I've learned to explain my rationale. They may not, you know, accept it. But oftentimes, what I find is when I explain my rationale, is that people could, you know, understand my logic. So what I think distinguishes me is that we have a community where there's so many different thoughts and voices out there. And I'm a person that do listen. I absolutely, the core of me, listen. And at the end of the day, I don't hate anyone, zero people. And I will stand side by side if someone allows me to, no matter what situation they're going through. And so I, I really do believe that in this moment, what we're experiencing is a need for everybody to come together and let our differences be on the sidelines and, and move together in unity, which doesn't always mean agreement. And I think that's where I have experience in helping people to really get to that space.
Yeah, thank you so much. And last but certainly not least is where can people reach you if they want to get involved with your campaign?
Yes, well, I welcome any and everyone. You can go to www-electbruceteague.com. Super excited about the opportunity for anyone to join, whether it's volunteering, hosting a yard sign in your yard, or just simply spreading the word. So we, I, I, I appreciate any opportunities for people to be a part of the campaign. And at the end of the day, the whole point of my raising my hand to serve one more time is because of the moment that we're in. And the true feeling that I know is that we all belong here. And I hope people will join in this effort.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Opening up, up to the floor, do we have questions?
I, I guess one of the things that, as we were talking about international students, it had occurred to me that I was in a meeting earlier this week where I learned about some of the potential changes to student visas. And it made me, it reminded me that this is like an, an opportunity for the city as a community to show that we care about everyone who's here and, and are trying to do what we can to, to stand with people who are being told by the federal government that they may have to leave soon. In particular, there is the, I guess there's some change to student visas.
That's the limit.
Yeah, the four-year cap.
There's, there's a, yeah, they're trying to propose this cap to student visa lengths, which basically means that you probably can't do a PhD in the United States as.
Four years.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm done, seven to ten, STEM is five, you know. So it's something that a lot of our international grad students are concerned about, but maybe like some, well, I can let you.
Oh, I mean, I, I guess, I, I was wondering i-if there's, if you've heard about this? And if, if there've been any conversations with the university about what that would mean? And, I mean, it's, it's a really tough situation because I feel like it's sort of the city, as much as we wish that we could do more for these folks, it, it's, it would be really restricting what, what they could do and like how long they can stay in the city. But I guess it just occurred to me like, yeah, it's, has there been any conversation about, about the fact that a large portion of the international students may have to leave after four years, including people who are, have been here in grad school for more than four years by the end of this?
Yeah, so, you know, the, the Trump administration is throwing stuff left and right. This is something that ha, that has not, I, I haven't been made aware of until just now. So I do appreciate you bringing that to me now. Some of this stuff, you know, I read the paper every morning, right? Um and I saw what they're doing with uh state uh agencies. Um you know, the, the governor just came out with something uh where, you know, folks will have to go through a certain system to ensure that they can work legally in the US. So um this, I'm just, I, I appreciate you bringing this up. I do meet with the university on a monthly basis, the um President Wilson on a monthly basis and her team. And we do uh have conversations about various things um that happen. So I will absolutely look into this and it, it, you know, again, this isn't really a university. Um yes, it is, but um you know, I'll have to, it was, I don't know if this is coming from the feds. It has to be coming from the feds. Um and so I'm also connected with um the US Democratic Mayors Association. And so a lot of this stuff, I'm joining in on amicus briefs, which is um things going against uh some of the policies. We've been doing this uh since twenty twenty happened. I, I, I've, I've never seen so many amicus briefs. Um and there was a little pause and now it's up again. Uh we're joining lawsuits and all types of stuff. Um so this is something I will absolutely look into.
Okay, thanks. And as far as I know, the university was basically saying like, this is so out of line with the reality that it may, it may not go through. That this, it seems like this was a policy written for undergraduate students, not considering graduate students. And so their advice was essentially like, for now, nothing's final. We, we have to assume that things will proceed rationally.
Yeah, well the.
Which is a good reminder, but uh.
One reality is, who, who, who determines what is a four-year degree anymore? I was twenty-five when I graduated from the university on my actual birthday, which was fun. And the, and my parents' advice said, finally, we invite you to the graduation. So yes.
Uh I had a, a question about like those monthly meetings with the president and her staff, just because like COGS as an organization has been trying to get a meeting with President Wilson for a while. So I guess like, are those meeting minutes like published at all? Like is there, like, what do you guys even talk about? Like, yeah, between the city and the, and the university, because they have like a symbiotic relationship?
So there are um certain things that we talk about um such as the, like, we have a collaboration on the Burlington Street Bridge, right? So there are student in, interest because the, the students are the ones that utilize it the most. Um the federal government, uh or the um state of Iowa, um they own half of the road that goes west and the city of Iowa City owns the other half of the road that goes east. And so um so a lot of the conversations that we're having, we, is relating to things that will affect the university of, that impacts the university of Iowa. Um uh Jefferson Street and Market Street has been a street that we have talked about for years that they want to turn into a two-way. And so that is something that the university also has to be made aware of. When it comes down to the um summer program, and of course, we don't meet every month. Um but when it comes down to summer programming, um there are things that um come up. Um li- like last year after the um, the, the parade, there was a lot of concerns by business owners as well as um individuals uh that, you know, happen in the city. So there are just things that happened, our tailgating season, uh that is major. Um you know, uh things that are happening. Um the downtown um nightlife, I don't know if you un- heard about this one company that came in and had all the students out, you know, I, I forget the number, but I, I might exaggerate the number. But I would say close to ten thousand students. I don't, it's exaggeration, baby. But that is a, that's something that we have to talk about. Also, when it comes down to some of the services that the university uh ended, transferred over to um the Guideling Center, those are things that are often the topics that we talk about.
Yeah, I guess maybe I'm not really supposed to be asking questions, but there, there are definitely some things that maybe the city would have common interest in regarding to like Iowa City Human Rights ordinances. And obviously, the city doesn't have jurisdiction in those matters, but I can talk about that probably after. Are there other questions? I can probably do one more. Hannah, anything for you?
Well, really.
Right. Um but yeah, hearing done, I can probably go ahead and technically adjourn. But thank you so much for your time.
Yes, thank you all.